All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axerson County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, July thirtieth. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you please stand and join Mr. Formod for our invocation this morning. Welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning. I want to direct your attention this morning to passage in Romans, chapter thirteen. These verses are not directed at government leaders. They're directed at all the rest of us about what we can expect from government leaders. So there's an implication. Listen to what Apostle Paul wrote. Let every person be subject to the governing authorities. For there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. Therefore, whoever resists the authorities resists what God has appointed. And those who resist will incur judgment. For rulers are not a terror to good conduct, but to bad. Would you have no fear of the one who is in authority? Then do what is good, and you will receive his approval, for he is God's servant for your good. But if you do wrong, be afraid. For he does not bear the sword in vain, for he is a servant of God, an avenger who carries out God's wrath on the wrongdoer. Therefore, one must be subject, not only to avoid God's wrath, but also for the sake of conscience. For because of this, you also pay taxes, for the authorities are ministers of God attending to this very thing. Pay to all what is owed to them. Taxes to whom taxes are owed, revenue to whom revenue is owed, respect to whom respect is owed, honor to whom honor is owed. Father in heaven, thank you that you institute government. Thank you, Father, that you have given us leadership, and I pray, Father, that as the commissioners meet again today and consider the affairs of the county, that you will give them wisdom. You'll give them understanding and courage to deal with the issues. It's the time of year when things are maybe coming together with the taxes being worked on, and I pray that you will just give us all courage to look forward to how we can look to the future. I pray, Father, that day by day as they minister to our county, that it will be for the good of each one of us who live here. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, public comment. Being none. Approval of the minutes. Did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
To move. Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments. Michelle Rebus.
I don't think I have any. It's a good little ground around some of the roads. Everything's out, but. Yeah, I've seen that there's county's going to be chipping ceiling soon. I think there might be even up today. See, Highway nine's been overlaid south of Lancaster. They're starting there. So be careful of the slow traffic and the traffic changes and detours and everything, because it's the season for yellow cones, for orange cones, and be careful out there.
Um, I don't really have anything county related, and I just want to share something that that made my heart happy because you know, Senior Village is near and dear to many people's hearts in the county, and you know, we recently sold it this past year, and I was up there over the weekend seeing my grandma, and the new company is investing in the building and had the entire roof torn off, putting new sheeting and a new roof and all the things that we as the county, right, couldn't couldn't accomplish for the infrastructure and the building and all the things. So it just, it made me happy to see, you know, investment in in the building and in the people and all the things. So I know people still wonder, you know, how that went, and so seeing that, it just, it it just made me smile, knowing that we, you know, continue to know we made the right decision, but I just think for the folks wondering about Senior Village, seeing that investment is good. So just wanted to share that. Okay, so new business. I have a few additions to our agenda. First of all, I wanted to bring up our GIS Coordinator Roger Denton had sent us an email on July twenty-six, twenty-four with the court layout that he has designed and working in collaboration with the Chief Chief Judge Loudon and Court Administrator, Mr. Crossland. And he got approval from them to move forward with the design that he presented. And so now he's presenting it to the commission, just to make sure everybody's on board. So I would look for a motion to approve the court layout as sent in an email from Roger Denton on July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yep, so moved.
Okay. I will second. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. I have the court's twenty twenty-five budget that I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign. The proposed expenditures for the budget year twenty twenty-five is sixty-six thousand and seventy-five dollars. Do I have a motion to approve and allow me to sign?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded all those.
What was it last year?
Last year was fifty-three thousand eight sixty. And just they have twenty twenty-three was forty thousand six ninety-five twelve. So. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, I also have a speaking of Senior Village, I have a purchase order, and this is from the Senior Village Pass Through Fund for twenty twenty-four payout. Senior Village money is received from in sign after the sale dates of service at the amount of thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sorry.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. Now, one more purchase order, but I'm going to add that in during our road and bridge discussion, because it's a purchase order for them. So next up is Corey Scott, Chief of Emergency Services for an ambulance bid opening. We are ahead of schedule, so if you want to wait till ten twenty, or if you're good.
Sure show.
Okay.
I'm here. Did Michelle send those down?
No, but there is one. But I
Is there just one?
Just one.
Okay. All right, he comes with an opener. Kind of preparing, you gotta be careful. All right. Are you ready to open? Apparently, there's one.
We have to call nine-one-one.
Now I'll just walk away. Come on, Mark. A different letter opener. It kind of looks like a steak knife.
Hand that back there.
All right, so. We received one bid. It is from Emergency Services Supply from Osage Ambulances. And the bid is for a twenty twenty-seven Osage Type One Ford F-four-fifty, two-wheel-drive ambulance for our spec. In addition, the Furno inline mount system for our cot systems. Total unit cost three hundred and five thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
Can you do it one more time, please?
Three, zero, five, four, three, six, point, three, three.
Compared to where your estimate was.
When we put in as a placeholder, I think we put three hundred thousand in as a placeholder.
You didn't say an estimated delivery date or timeframe. I think this is the representative.
Yes, David Vance is here. He is the Emergency Services Supply. If you had any questions, he was willing to answer those.
Chair on the fifty-one.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, oh. Thank you. But do you have an idea of timeframe would be? Right now, we are out until probably November of twenty twenty-seven. We actually, during this time period, during this time, during this quote, we rolled into the twenty twenty-eight pricing and delivery schedule. Since we had already had this pricing request, they locked the price in through the fifth of August. Right now, they're holding about twenty days from the time I requested. So I have it locked in at twenty-seven pricing. What we've seen historically since about twenty twenty of COVID, about eight percent per year. You talk of three hundred thousand dollar truck, you're talking from essentially from the twenty-seven to twenty-eight, about a twenty-four thousand dollar price increase. But yeah, we're into late fourth quarter twenty twenty-seven as of right now. We have since COVID, we normally build about fifteen new builds a month. We have always close to two years or better done taking sixteen plus orders a month since then. You throw in all the inventory shortfalls, the chassis problems that were happening, and then the demand has has not slowed down. We're starting, you'll see a little little drop in demand, but we're out three plus years.
I did have a question, too. We've done this in the past with Osage. If this comes out of ARPA money, it has to be committed or encumbered by the end of the year. We've placed those in escrow accounts in the past. Would that still be a possibility where?
It is. Our our owner, John, is the dealership. He'll put it into an interest-bearing checking account from whenever you want to make payment. When the truck's delivered, he'll pull out what's owed for the truck. And then whatever, any excess that's, you know, probably that point zero, zero, one percent, whatever, we just cut a check back, back to the county.
Mark, are we allowed to? I doubt that we're allowed to invest the money to.
No, so what we would, we would just have to write the check to Osage or the name of it. Whatever they do with the the check is on now. So if we get.
They can't refund that back the interest.
The interest we can, because that would be new money, not ARPA money. So you write the check for the the total bid price, and then that's that's the ARPA money, but any interest money would be.
We have to do an arbitrage return then. Well, anyway, we we can do it.
Are there any restrictions on ARPA money that would generate interest? It's certainly kind of a hill on that.
No, Connie and I will think about.
I did price the Furno as of today's pricing, because Furno is not able to price out that far. And that's that's sixty-six hundred dollars for the the mount for the cot. With that, and I did make note here, we would, we could order it today. I would have her sit on it until the day before the price increase and then put the order in, try to have her hold it as long as possible. I don't know. I I don't know if they'll hold it all the way to twenty-seven. They may. It could be a year, two years out, they may bill it. At that point, we would probably bill for that, so we're not sitting on six thousand dollars for planning that for, you know, a couple of years. But that would get you into the, be able to get today's pricing on that. And the only other note, and I always put this, I've started doing this since with the chassis. Basically, I have a note, the chassis volatility. We're estimating with that chassis is going to be in twenty-seven. We've been pricing or we've been estimating high. Normally, Ford was always one to three percent. And usually you can say about one and a half percent, and it was good for a year. We're literally getting chassis one day from the next with two different invoices. And so we have on here an estimated chassis price of seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Hopefully, we're high. If not, then they, when we get that chassis, we get the invoice. I reach out to, and I think we did this on the last truck, was hey, here's what your chassis true price came in. If we can get a little bit back, great. We we try to give some back, or we may have to reconcile it on the back end, but we just don't know what for it to do, and that's out of our control. But the actual conversion, everything other than chassis, once it's locked in, that price does not change.
So just the Furno and chassis, like two variables, right?
Right. If you wait on it, I know right now, if you order the Furno mount, we sit on it as long as we can. Price is sixty-six, forty-four.
Where are you guys located?
Also, just built in Lynn City or Lynn, Missouri, just south of Jefferson City. I live in Waukaw. Okay, so I live, I'm I'm a paramedic in the state here in, you know, within Riley County and Park County, and so I'm local. But they're building in South Jeff City.
Well, normally, I would ask to review the bids and make sure they meet the spec. But we only have one bid. We have dealt with Osage in the past. They know our spec inside now. But I have no reason to not recommend accepting the the bid from Osage.
You, we have time today. Do you want to draw up a purchase order?
Sure.
And maybe, I mean, we're still ahead of schedule if you you guys don't mind, then Corey can sign it. We can go it right.
You want to?
He's just going to draft a purchase order for it. That way we can. And you did good with that budget number. I mean, you're that's awesome.
Consider that's moving.
I know.
Or, you know, don't don't give me too much credit. That's just it was a time like if I could.
Know anything that are going up.
Six, seven months later, but.
One thing.
Be it still on that. We're I I I'm lucky to do twenty days, because something, we have over five hundred vendors, so something, a light head, air horns, suspension, something's changing.
I was just going to ask, one thing I think that would be helpful, even if it's toward the end of the year, is to get a revised CIP plan, just for this, just for the ARPA.
Already working on it.
Okay, thank you, because it's just I know with our, you know, ARPA, we're getting up to date and.
Yeah, my tenure plan in some good ways doesn't make any sense anymore.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just think it'd be good for us to review, you know, an up-to-date one, so we can gather timelines and needs and and kind of have that.
Yeah, this changes even what I've done over the last couple of days.
And I when we were talking about budget and CIPs and things, it's like now we're going to the diesels. Do they have a longer lifespan? Do they? What does that look like? I mean, you know, can they? Can we extend the life of them?
Yeah.
And that was, and so that's something that I'm interested in as a commissioner to see what
Yeah.
we've invested in upgraded the diesels and and things like that. So
Um, yeah, I'm not.
Like down the road.
I don't have any big concern about extending the diesel chassis another couple of years.
Also, I mean, since we're back in charge, that I know that they're being taken care of, and they're being maintained, and all of that adds to the life of them. And so.
Yeah. And I can tell you, just just for reference, the last gasoline chassis, interestingly enough, through a different company, he was the salesperson. And nothing wrong, you know, with how that chassis was built or anything, but it's the last gasoline on it, and it's at end of life. It's it's really getting tired. The diesels are not wearing out at that rate. So just having that in-house comparison where we started with a new gas chassis versus new diesel chassis, it's it's
Diesel chassis is heavier.
Heavier built. I think since you're sitting here, but the, you know, the F four-fifty, the pickup chassis versus the E four-fifty, and they have the same number next to them. They are not built at the same level, even remotely. That E four-fifty chassis has lighter duty springs, lighter duty axles. Could you confirm that?
Only in a gas. You can only get the E in a gas only chassis. Since two thousand and ten, Ford did away with the the E series and and a diesel. Chevrolet got rid of the diesel in sixteen in their van cutaways. The the newer gas that we're seeing, we're seeing pretty good luck with them, but they're only a couple of years out. So we're kind of waiting to see. But, you know, and 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 so that's where a a big portion of that price was. I these, like an F-five-fifty, I know the number off the top of my head. I was selling that chassis two years ago at fifty-six thousand. We're estimating almost ninety thousand for twenty-eight for that same chassis.
Which we use a chassis size one step down.
Yeah.
We use the F-four-fifty.
Yeah.
We just with the boxes, we're limited on the size of the box because of the F and M station. The boxes have to be small. But plus, we just don't carry the same level of equipment that EMS did even ten years ago. The way we use oxygen has changed medically, so we don't carry as much onboard as we used to. We don't use spine boards as a treatment device anymore. They're simply a patient moving device. We're not carrying as much of that type of equipment. We were able to downsize the box size, so we don't need the F-five-fifty chassis.
Smaller, too.
Yeah, we just don't need that bigger chassis. But then even if we did need it, the F and M station limits us. Anyway, we just the hundred and fifty-inch smaller box just fits that building.
Patients can be transported in a box.
Three safely.
That's with one sitting?
Yeah, one would have to be sitting two line down.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's another reason we've stuck with the boxes as opposed to the van style. Is yes, we're a small ambulance service, but we have a tendency to run multi-patient car accidents, multi-patient incidents, having that ability for one ambulance to transport two or three people safely expands our abilities. If we go to a van, we reduce that ability, and so then one crew becomes a little more, a little more limited. So definitely stuck to that box-style truck because of that reason.
And what happens? This is company or somebody have, let's say, God forbid, you have an ambulance get wrecked or whatever. And it's it's done, it's totaled. So how how do you get another ambulance? I mean.
Well, the initial call, and we have fortunately nobody was hurt, but we did have an ambulance damaged significantly. I actually called him and said, you got a loaner. And we got a loaner while it was repaired. I would suppose in the instance of actually having one damaged to the point it couldn't be repaired, we're calling companies around looking for a demo. Is it going to be how we're going to do that?
We have our dealership, we buy so many, I'm using the air quotes, demos. A demo is typically a stock-based unit. We have, we take up slots. We bought slots essentially scattered. Twenty-five is about full, but twenty-six. If if you call and said, hey, we wrecked a truck, we've got to get in something. We've got a little wiggle room. If we had to, we can put somebody in. It might not be today you get the truck or a week or month, but we may be able to get you into a loaner for you know, a loaner rental type thing. If you're going through insurance for a month or two, while we try to get something in sooner. We've got some little spots that are kind of hidden away. There, I don't even know what they're, he's like, because those salesmen are always want them. Give them, can we get, you know, they won't give to us. So they're there for our customers, our cut, our true Osage customer base, when they call us just for this of we blew them, blew an engine, or we wrecked a truck, and we're in a bad way. We need a truck. We have kind of scattered out, and that's Kyle, the president of Osage. He kind of manages those and hides them away and 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 if if we need them, he says, hey, I got a spot. We can get them in sooner than say the end of. But we try to do that for these emergency situations, because it it always pops up.
And we do retain the last one we rolled out of service. We don't license it. We don't keep it stocked. But I retain one at all times. So I've got one tucked away in the storage building. So if we do have an incident or we have a a long-term maintenance issue, something like replacing an engine, I call the state. I get a vehicle inspection on that. We relicense it. We put the equipment on it. We put it back into service. So I always keep one in reserve for that reason. Yeah, it gets run once a month. It gets its oil changed and everything, but the the likelihood over the time I've I've taken over, we've only had to stand that unit up twice. So it's really not cost-effective to keep it equipped. It it costs somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars a year to keep an ambulance stocked because of spoilage, waste use. You know, and
Got to have it.
And fuel and everything else. So given I can usually have that unit stood up in seventy-two hours legally. So it's really generally not a big issue in that case. So, yeah, I've always got plan A, B, and C, D, Z.
I figured you did.
Yeah, so.
Right. Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our Emergency Services Director in the amount of three hundred and five thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents for a twenty twenty-seven Osage Warrior Type One ambulance by Osage Ambulance to be paid to Emergency Services Supply out of ARPA funds. Do I have the motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero.
Like this, along with the light packs, and you see here on the feed.
It's very helpful.
Good place.
Really good place, really good place. Not that there won't be more requests coming in the next couple of years, but yeah, this changes my CIP plan pretty drastically.
I'm excited to see.
Yeah, I started started working on that yesterday, so. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your business. You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be back. Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I just realized you had it on the agenda, so. Well.
I probably should just.
Already got that one done.
Yeah.
I thought you were just moving along. No, I meant like as I was handing them, I was like, new business, like making them, and then I was like, oh, wait, there it is. It's fine. I think we covered it.
And honestly, the the budget discussion and overview can just wait till a workshop. Because I was planning just to re go over what we did last week. But I think there's some changes.
Okay. So will we be, well, but you won't. We have to certify today, right? Okay.
Need time to do stuff today, don't we?
I know, but it actually feels good to have that, like. I guess, do we want to see if Katie wants to come earlier?
Sure.
Okay, we good? All right, so we are back on time here at ten twenty-nine for Mark Zeltner, Finance Director with the twenty twenty-five Budget Discussion and Overview, and also the District Court twenty twenty-five Annual Budget, which we approved in new business. So. Finance Director with the twenty twenty five budget discussion and overview and also the district court, um, twenty twenty five annual budget, which we approved in new business, so, um.
Alright, okay, so. Uh, currently how we are now is fifty six point nine five nine mils, um. We said that we cannot exceed fifty seven even mils, uh, so. But I think there's some changes that you guys wanna do, so that will change some of this, um. There were. After last week's meeting, I sent an email to every department. Letting them know about the three percent cola. Um, also letting them know if, if their budget was reduced or if something changed, um, with it. And I heard back from three departments, three elected individuals and no, nobody else, no appointed people. Um, offices, departments had issues. Um, the first one that I heard back was from the county attorney. The second was the sheriff and the third one was the register of deeds. Was it the three feedback that I heard from? Um, I don't know. What I should get into detail about, but. I think.
Well, we didn't know for sure about some of the sheriff stuff. That was kind of a question mark, so that's probably good feedback, whatever it is.
Okay.
So real quick, can we just summarize?
Sure.
Because where we were, uh, to where we are is we reduced Road and Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Four hundred and sixty eight thousand, seven nineteen.
Correct.
And we reduced the maintenance budget thirty thousand.
Correct.
And then. Can you summarize what we did from there? Because. Because I have elected reserves.
Yep, so we, um, have elected reserves of three hundred and sixty eight thousand, nine oh four.
Okay, that's what I had.
Um, and then we were throwing around the, I, the number of two hundred and fifty thousand from the countywide sales tax fund eighty seven.
Okay. Which I had.
What was the elected reserve again?
Three sixty eight, nine oh four.
And that was all of it? Correct?
No, um, that was with the sheriff's hundred and seventy two. And the fifty, I think.
But those were already in, in the budget.
He, no, he did not have that budget. So he said he was gonna use his reserves to pay for those things out of his budget.
Oh.
So he took it out of his budget to just use reserves to pay for it.
For those two items, one seventy two and fifty.
If I don't leave the money in there, in the reserve to fund those things. Then I don't know how he will fund those things, because he doesn't have a budget either.
Right, okay, so, but we were talking about like, it's gonna hit us next year, but where to use the cash from? And that's why we said, well, let's use these reserves to get us. To break, like, to break even. So the three sixty eight, nine oh four was on top of the one seventy two and the fifty.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so. Regardless of where and how that's plugged in. Each one of the line items of the elective would be plugged into their particular budget, correct? Like where?
Um.
So like, for instance, if the, if the sheriff wanted three vehicles, it'd be in the budget offset by the reserves.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And same with the other electives, like whatever the line item would be offset by the reserves.
Right.
Okay. And then I had a note, oh, because we offset the county clerk's reserves for office renovation.
Correct.
Okay.
We added, um, twenty thousand back into the clerk's budget for renovations.
And paid for by her reserves, okay.
Since then, I did receive, uh, I talked with the IT director. And he was thinking that the, the project estimate. Or that he had in his capital outlay for twenty twenty five of twenty five thousand, five hundred was too high. Um, he's estimating. To set it to ten thousand dollars, because there's only a few projects that would be done in twenty twenty five. So without making any change, I don't know if you guys wanna visit with him.
Yeah.
More about it. I can see if he can come up and visit.
Because that, that also impacts our decision with, uh. The proposed, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree on that.
Yeah, kind of, that makes sense.
Well, because I don't wanna cut his budget if we're not hitting the ARPA timeline for his projects, right? Like.
Right.
We need to.
Then that's what he's.
We need to have a plan.
Yeah. And will the sheriff be here at budget workshop as well?
I do not know that information. So. Did you say you wanted a recap of those three things or?
No, I just wanted to make sure my notes from last week were still, like, I, I feel better now, knowing that that's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Um, okay.
How does that affect your mill calculation if it's budget and it reserve?
It, 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 it doesn't. So we're, we're reducing the ad form taxes based on the reserve, so the money's still in the budget.
Still in, yeah, okay, let me make sure. We're not cutting anything, we're just finding a different source to pay for.
Right.
And as far as, so R O D wasn't, it had nothing to do with the reserves. It was just the coal, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that one can be taken off. And then county attorney?
Um, the county attorney was worried about. The reserve that she had for this year, because she indicated to me the office renovations are not complete. She was worried about how to fund the office renovations if she didn't have any reserve there. Um.
What's left to do there?
I thought it was a piece of trim.
They're, they're very, very close, yeah, I mean.
Not, not sure. To me, she didn't seem like it was just a piece of trim.
Okay.
Well, that's the last, I mean, I agree with you that it was just.
A piece of trim.
Because it was almost like, uh, it was such a small thing, uh, I wish I could get it done, then it'd be done, and it was very small, okay, so. But Brian was gonna use his, his budget for the courthouse stuff, like for that hallway, the stairway, so I mean, maybe that's what she's talking about, I still don't know.
Not sure either.
That does need better lighting.
But after discussing with her that this was twenty three's rollover into twenty four is what we were talking about. She's okay. If you guys use the rollover, as long as she had rollover from twenty four to twenty five in order to complete the renovations. Which we all know that she's going to, because the assistant county attorney hasn't been hired. Uh, so that salary is still. Not being used up, so that would roll over and she would have. Money to do that.
So we're ready to have Brian come in during our budget workshop as well.
Okay.
Do you mind letting him know, letting the sheriff know?
Okay.
I appreciate it. They may be online.
Now. Um. When do we wanna do that? Noon? Hopefully five.
I mean, we'll probably be ready or.
Quarter to.
So.
I asked Katie to come early and she said she was finishing one thing up and she'd be right here.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with what she's gonna be talking about, she's not gonna need.
So we'll probably be ready as early as eleven fifteen, I would think, because ARPA funds discussion, I mean, we can get to that.
Thirty, thirty at the worst. You went to ARPA first then?
So, well.
They probably should talk about ARPA before budget workshop. Do a recap on it afterwards, maybe.
Yeah.
It's kind of tied together.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we need to have that discussion before budget. That's fine.
The ARPA first?
Yeah. But I guess that's the point, when would ARPA's got before you? Yeah.
So.
That makes sense.
I kinda think, I think we should do budget workshop and then ARPA, just for the fact of some of the feedback that I got.
Well, what I'm saying is I'd like to know where we're at.
Yep.
As of this moment.
Yep.
Before we go into budget discussion.
Some items.
Um, well. It's kind of one of those things, it's all tied together and that is. Didn't Joe wanna know about progress, progress on the proposed Road and Bridge facility? Well.
B and G was the, huh?
B and G was the, well, yeah, I'm, I'm knowing about that for a couple of weeks.
I agree.
But. I'm, I'm not in favor of doing anymore. So if we're not gonna do anymore, we would, we would still need to expend those ARPA funds that are allotted for that. We would need to get moving on spending it on something else.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the land purchase and initial.
The land purchase is fine.
Okay.
And, and the, um. Uh, survey.
Yeah.
But as far as. The grading and all of that stuff, that's still being a possibility, well, I, I think that's. Breaking ground on a facility, you don't know if you're gonna be able to afford it, so I don't, I'm not for that. We would need to find. Were that money, that's the ARPA money that was gonna be used for that, we'd need to find a home for that.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I think it's a good discussion, because we need to also look at. The building proposed, it's the main buildings, the, the main thing, if utilities all put in, you'll find out that main building. Maybe we reduce it by one stall, maybe we downsize some part of it, we'll get, we can get some estimates on that, and then we can make a better decision. Because right now I don't like the G G's estimate at all. I don't think it's accurate.
So, and some concerns constituents have brought up, um, to me, which was. And enlightening was looking at the grading first before utilities and fencing of like. You really need to get your grading done, because those terraces tie in with the rest of the, the farm, so when you're. When you're cutting those off and the drainage to the, to the south. It was a concern, so it's again, right, when you start moving dirt, you start understanding what's, you know, and the plan might. Tweet depending on what the lay of the land ends up being, but without, without knowing those things, um. So again, yeah, but we should definitely.
Well, I mean, yeah, what? How we do, I mean, we. We definitely would need a plan. And that is all gonna be based on how we're gonna fund this thing. And if we've got to go do a bond issue or something like that, I mean, that's gonna.
I don't see it happening at all.
The bond wouldn't pass.
No, I think it's what you're talking about face, where I hear people going over is, we need the facility, just do it slow.
Yep, hundred percent, that's why I hear too.
I would have one or two people say never do that, but they're gonna never do anything, people, to be honest with you.
A lot of people say never do it, because it's tied in with the tax, uh, when they see. Sure. Seven mils up and probably that much again next year.
I, I, I think it's, well, some of your constituents tell me, I think you should do it, let's do it slow.
Yep, that's, that's the feedback I've gotten. From everyone.
How do you do that slow? I mean.
Well, I think that's what we're talking about, you get, just get it laid out and know what you got, and then go for bid and maybe you put the one building one year, maybe you do the other equipment sheds two years later.
But even that, we would, we're not gonna be able to fund it. Slow, I mean. You, you're gonna have to come up with what you're willing to bid, but then, uh, to build, but then you're gonna have to have an income source somewhere. I mean, if the, the ARPA funding that we were talking about, putting two million dollars to it, it's gonna be gone.
Remote reduced.
Gone.
But we still have one point five of senior village proceeds, which if we go slow and have a plan and local numbers, not. Architect numbers, right, of like, local contractors helping through the process of like. We can achieve this, and I know we can, like.
Yeah.
And it's just, it. Take a breath and like the planning, like, let's think it through, because not one of us sitting up here wants regrets, no, no one does. Like, we wanna do it right, and we wanna make sure, you know, when, when a constituent's like, Case, have you ever thought of what it's gonna do to the terraces when you start grading it? I'm like. No, it's like, thank you for that input, right? Like, thank you for that input, but when you start getting the lay of the land how you want it, then it's gonna make, okay, you know. You might change the, the plan of how it is, but right now it's. Thinking it through and making sure we take our time, step forward, lay it out, and I, I mean, I, I. I fully believe we can achieve it, it's just.
But, but how, I mean, just saying, I think we can do it, how are we gonna do it without bonding? And you only have the, uh, senior village money, and you, at one point, you even said you didn't even wanna use that. You wanted to borrow the full amount.
I didn't said borrow the full amount, I said I don't wanna use it four months into selling, like, we have to have a plan, we have to have a, a thought out plan to where we're not like. Oh, we're doing this, and then we're like, oh crap, we didn't think about that, right? Like.
No, I think your proposal was that, that we would, uh, keep that, and so we would have the investment, and we would be getting the investment dollars off of it. And then bond or borrow the, the, the money and not even use any of it.
I do think we should invest money and let it work for ourselves.
Brainstorming.
Well, but again, you're gonna have to have. Even if you do a bare bones beginning building, we're gonna, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here. I mean. Four, three, four million dollars, how are you gonna do that? We don't have any kind of plan on, on what to do.
Well, the only good plan is to actually get some things out, get some specs out. Do an RFP, if we end up turning them all down, turn them all down, but at least we can get. Some figures to work from and, uh.
Well, my, my thing is we shouldn't break ground on something, we don't even have a plan for it.
I figure the county's gonna be around a long time. And if we can get this project started, it will get done. If it's a ten-year plan, I don't care, it's fine.
I think that's being, that's not being very, uh. Transparent to the constituents there, if you're starting a project.
Very transparent.
No, it's not, you're, how are you, how are you gonna pay for this? We have no plan, we have nothing. And you're gonna break ground on an estimate, that we're saying, no, we're not even, uh, agreeing that, uh, we, we don't, we're not happy with.
Eric, you, it's, I felt you're starting with, I don't even wanna make a plan. I'm saying, let's get a plan. And then we make financial decisions. You know, you don't buy a farm, build a house, or start a business with a, a long-term plan, which guess what, changes a lot, because I've done it. But you gotta have a direction, a vision, and so we gotta get started, we get the land, we get the.
And it has to go in phases, because as you build something, like, once you have the lay of the land. Your plan is gonna change, it's just like building a home, like, you have to select the, the land to figure out how you're gonna, like, what kind of home you're gonna build, right? So like, when we grade it, if it's all marshy on one end, like, we're gonna have to reevaluate. Like, we don't know until we know, and so that's just. Taking our time to make sure we do know and, and making a plan, devising, devising a plan. Which, right now, you know, the money is in an interest bearing four point seven five, like, it's. Not to say that's a lot, but we don't, it's not going anywhere, right? We can have time to make a plan. And, and put the plan out there so that it is transparent and we can achieve it, like, you have a goal, and then you work toward the goal. I, I.
What we, what we do know now is we have a facility that's under, undersized, it's, uh, in horrible shape, it's just, uh. The, the puddings are, the, the beams going into the puddings are, you know, rusting off, it's a mess. We know the shop doesn't work. We've not grown it all, and we know that, there's no place for employees to do anything, the storage is horrible, so there's. Either we've put five to six hundred thousand probably into that facility, which we know still won't be adequate. Or we make a plan, and then they're probably willing to work what they got until we get there, so. Man, it's just a matter of being willing to say, maybe it's a five-year plan, maybe it's a secure plan.
And also all the efficiencies that come along with it that have been expressed to us from centralized hub. You know, closer to the rural roads, being able to stockpile millings when there's projects. I mean, I heard on the radio this morning, there's gonna be a highway project on fifty nine, like, let's take advantage of buying stuff at a cheap rate when they wanna get rid of millings and different things. And having a place to stockpile, because that's gonna help taxpayers in the long run, like. Hey, we got these for, you know, ten cents on the dollar, and now we're using them for our needs, um, it's just. But again, it's gonna take a plan, but like foreseeing the future, planning ahead, like, we don't need the millings now, but we can get them at a heck of a good rate. For when we do need them, and it's. I, so, anyway, sorry, we kinda got out, um, but, um. Mark, what else do you need? Like.
Um, Scott's here to.
Oh, hi Scott, sorry. Um, okay, so we asked. Yes.
Um, he said he could reduce it, but just wanted to talk that through before we actually did.
Thanks for coming in, sorry, I didn't even, uh, we were in discussion, but, um, so Mark had told us that your thought of possibly reducing based on your projects. And I know we haven't got to the place where you're ready to discuss the RFP, um, and those projects, but. I guess for me, I'm just making sure that. Those may be two separate projects of like, why we reduce the budget.
So, uh, we took projects that I was gonna do next year, the sixteen thousand from ARPA, and. We took that out of next year's budget, because we were gonna do those this year.
Okay. Okay, those projects we've allocated ARPA. Already, you're just reducing out of your budget. Okay. That makes me feel better because I was foreseeing it being futuristic projects that you had to cut back. And I just think for those one-time projects to get you caught up, like, ARPA is a great avenue.
And there's, there are some projects that we still have to do next year, but they're more software-based and they're. Uh, projects that would be replacing stuff that we've already paid for this year, so I didn't wanna do those this year and. Basically lose that money that we, we already spent, so.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better.
One thing I would, uh, uh, Mark helped me realize is. There is a yearly cost for the RFP projects. Um, right now, as it stands, it's about forty thousand dollars a year. Um, I think that's. Overpriced by a lot, and, uh, I think. From what I've been able to see, we might be able to get it down to twenty, but I still feel like that's really high.
So that was very surprising to me, and I saw you guys go out in the hall and talk, and I was hoping that you were kinda getting to the bottom of that. Because my understanding of the RFP was like, this is project-based, this is a one and done, you come in, give us a price to help us with check, check, and then. When I got to the last page and it was more of a subscription, I'm like, hmm, that's not really what we anticipated, so.
And there's, um, I mean, that was my, my thought at first, it was, it was maybe like, there's gonna be a small licensing fee per computer that's gonna. Accessing encrypted files. I could see that being a thing, and I wouldn't expect that to be over like five thousand in a year. And, so, um, I still, I'll have a discussion with TS Connor tomorrow, and I'll know more about. What's involved and why things are costing, why, what the yearly costs exactly are. And why they are the way they are, cause there's, there's also a managed service fee, uh, like, uh, I think of nine hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. And I don't know what that is, it's not related to slot or licensing, and I don't know what they'd be managing. So, yeah, I'm gonna figure out what that is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned with that yearly. Uh, it is, I, I didn't see it coming, I mean, there wasn't even, to me, it was no. Hint at it or anything, all of a sudden, it's like, it's there.
You are, you're service fee.
Right, well, and maybe you can convey that now that you met with the commission today, when you meet with him tomorrow, like, hey. The projects, therefore supporting me to get caught up and to secure, however. Beyond that, like, I'm not in favor of an annual subscription or a monthly subscription, like. We, that's, that's next phase, right, of discussion of like, what we need, like, right now, we need this stuff cleaned up and. And all the permissions, everything you went through in the RFP, we need that done, but we don't need that done to. In order to get it done, to sign on to some commitment, like.
Well, it made me kinda, way my brain went, it's like. Well, are, are they designing this, we're cleaning this up, we're getting that, but it's also gonna be like integrated into now that you've done it. Now, you, you're gonna be hamstrung with this because the. The way, and I don't know text, do you know that now that you've. Got this integrated, now you're gonna be subject to this forever because you're, you're all networked in with them and, and.
The, the first three projects, um, they're gonna be at all of our systems, um, I fully understand all three of those systems and, and well. First three projects and how to implement them, and we could do them ourselves, and I'm starting to lean towards that way instead. Um, it was just, it takes a lot of time to, to interview each position, figure out what their access rules are. And then implement that into active directory and our file share structure. And it, it just takes a lot of time, so I was like, if we can have some help doing that, that'd be great. And, and now that I'm, I'm thinking about next year and how our projects are basically gonna be done by the end of this year. Uh, we're gonna have some extra time that we could actually dedicate to those first three projects.
Yeah.
So if some projects really need them on, is there a project you could possibly do? So I was gonna ask my question for you, that first base projects is. You reevaluate that with them and.
If we can either reduce those in scope or, and drop some of them entirely, so.
As long as the end result is improved security and.
And get us caught up.
Right.
Well. What about if we'd done it in-house and take some of that, what we were gonna. Expand for them to do it and actually get some more help to. You know, get another assistant or somebody in there for a while to, to get you caught up and do it in-house versus. Is that possible?
I'm, I'm against that, and this is what, just why, of, of like, I'd rather outsource a project. That way, when it's done, it's done, right? Because when you onboard people for a project, and then the project's complete, then you're like. Hmm, we do, we really need three IT people, right, in the county when, and, and, and so.
Uh, yeah.
And I, and I don't like that of like, hey, we want you on for a few months and then we're gonna let you go, like. Uh, a project base, I like the fact that, and for the security piece, right?
I, I, I agree with that. I'm thinking though that if it's. Tied in with the, the yearly subscription. I, I would might rethink it. I'm, I'm thinking that.
You're saying if you're paying a third party annually, why not pay somebody internally?
Yeah, and especially, and then you could reevaluate and maybe when it's more done and. Maybe, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of different ways of looking at it, cause my initial thing is, yes, I kinda like the outside. Uh, someone comes in, it's clean, and you don't have any internal, uh. Prejudices or things, or it's, it's comes in, I like that, but.
Kind of that rubber stamp for you is like, oh, validation, you know, it's like, it's clean, it's secure, and now, moving forward, you can continue that.
Building up.
Yeah, so, awesome, well. Um, appreciate you explaining your budget reduction and appreciate your budget reduction. Do you guys have any other questions for him on that?
As long as you feel comfortable that you can get that done, and. Let's go more into his cards.
Right, yeah, I feel comfortable with the reduction and just basically have an ARPA dollars, doing this year was, was ideal, so.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, they put in plan or project plan in the next two, three, four years.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I need to go around and see what all the equipment we have. How old is it?
Okay, thanks for coming early, eleven. But hold on, uh, one quick thing, so Joe, Joe Snyder's next, um, I just have this purchase order.
Okay.
Um, so I have a purchase order for Road and Bridge, um, to fully equipment. For a pad foot roller eighty-four inch rental for base one, and the amount of four thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. To be paid out of ARPA, do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
Is that to ARPA?
Yes.
Yes.
And we were gonna wait to discuss anything with BG with her nominees back in a couple weeks.
Yes.
All right, Kate, Catherine Sparks, Community Corrections Director, Discussion on Adult Services Amendment Requests.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Well, we're gonna have to meet with you.
I, I know, probably take up most of your time, don't I? Um, so last week I came in, talked mainly about juvenile services, and then we signed an amendment. Um, on Thursday of last week, I was able to get in contact with Karen Grenrich, she's up in. KDOC and oversees the fiscal or helps oversee parts of the fiscal department. Um, and so me and her were looking at the amendment I was gonna submit. The original email she sent me. Did not exactly mesh with what we needed, it was. Accurate with what she told me, but at the same time, there were some other things, especially on the juvenile side, since there's three different budgets that had to be taken into account. So with that being said, I worked with Karen on Thursday. And then yesterday to fix my amendments and have accurate amendments brought in to have you guys sign and submit over to KDOC. Um, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about that part.
So, okay, these are the adult ones.
This is two juvenile and one, uh, adult. It would be one juvenile, but I didn't have enough space on the juvenile one.
And these are in addition to the ones we did?
No.
These are the same.
Yeah, just, these are, um. Revised.
Okay.
That's how I wanna say it, these are revised to enter accuracy.
Okay.
So, on the juvenile side, it is very similar in the aspect of. We're wanting to move funds from various parts of our grant and to other parts of our grant, so from. One category to the next category, um, example being, I have three. Uh, budgets that I track on the juvenile block grant. Um. We need to move more, more funding into our case management account. For equipment. And take that out of our juvenile intake and assessment account for equipment. So that's what we're doing with these amendments, um.
You just wanna summarize it and then.
Yeah, I think that kind of. Basically is summarize it, so, one side is equipment and supplies, and the second one is for salary. The reason why we have these is just with the interim director doing the budget last time. We hired two, my, me and then my admin assistant, so that changed some things. You guys approved us. On, I'm sorry. Four twenty-three to replace some broken or damaged furniture, and then also to get those, um. Hard drives so we can do electronic storage instead of having physical copy files, things like that.
No new money, it's just moving the money around.
Correct.
Slots.
Okay, so last time you guys had asked me to go through each one, do you want me to do that?
I don't be.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to, um, approve the quarterly grant budget amendment report. As presented from our Community Corrections Director in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and two cents. Um, and allow the chair to sign. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero, and that was for juvenile block.
The board's already approved, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna take this one back in front of the board in October just for them to re-sign it, but yes, and Karen said I can go ahead and submit it as is.
The thirty. Um, so, do you want, before we scan it in, then you need to get one more signature?
Nope, they said to go ahead and, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, and I have, um, another quarterly grant budget amendment report from the Pathway for Success Juvenile Block Grant. In the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. As presented from our Community Corrections Director, do I have a motion to allow the chair to sign?
Someone, sorry.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, okay.
And then this is the adult grant, again, it's the same thing, we promoted Kathy. Into her ISO two position, hired me and hired, um, Nikki, my admin, which changed some of our salary. And then get, receive that new equipment along with supplies, things like that.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the quarterly grant budget amendment report for Pathway for Success. Um, for the adult comprehensive plan, um. Sorry. Okay, it's okay.
I think it's seventeen thousand nine hundred, but I can't.
No, you're good, I'll just add them up and add it on there real quick. So, ten thousand two sixty-four thirty-eight, plus seven, six, four, four, eight, seven. Seventeen nine oh nine twenty-five. So I look for a motion to approve the quarterly grant budget amendment report, Pathway. For success for the adult comprehensive plan in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cents. As presented from our Community Corrections Director and allow that chair to sign, do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll have for today. All right, thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, next is ARPA funds discussion.
Okay. So with, um. The revised. Numbers for the, maybe that's ambulance from the bed opening. The purchase order that was just approved for Road and Bridge. That leaves five hundred and twenty-five thousand five sixty-three forty-nine.
Um. The. Yeah, the one for the Road and Bridge, that's off of the six hundred and sixty-six that we'd approved.
Correct.
So that, is that being. Accounted for price, I mean, have we already?
No, it's gonna be first by. So it's five twenty-nine eight oh eight seventeen.
Mine please.
Five twenty-nine eight oh eight seventeen.
There's going to be an additional survey costs that have been allocated yet or estimated?
Has, on eleven thousand six ninety-four.
We proved that last week or two weeks ago.
Uh. It don't matter, yeah.
Okay. Kind of forced me, yes.
All right, so I think probably the budget discussion. At this point.
Okay.
Would be helpful, um.
Okay, so, there are some topics to bring up, um, maybe before the other two gentlemen get here. To go over their stuff. If you wanted to go into a budget workshop.
Yeah, okay, so, um, I'd look for a motion to adjourn into budget workshop. I'm sorry, no, recess, not adjourn, look for a motion to recess into budget workshop.
For how, uh, till?
Till we're done.
Okay, so move, say.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um, and we are going to have a executive session. For thirty minutes, non-elected personnel with commissioners, register of deeds, register of deeds clerk and finance director.
Well, sure, want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Uh, I'll move the board of county commissioners recessing executive session at. Eleven thirty-five AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four thirty-one. Four three one nine B one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And board come out of executive session in thirty minutes. In the commission room, courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, a register of deeds, uh. Assistant. Register deeds, is that?
Registered.
Clerk, okay, uh. And was county counselor?
Finance director.
Finance director, oh, okay. Say.
Move in a second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We're going to executive session eleven thirty-six.
Different people with different offices, it's amazing.
Finish this out and then adjourn into budget.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, that's, thank you ladies.
All right.
Okay, so we are, um. Unfinished business, not having any much, I'll wait for the county councilor to get back for updates on that. I'd look for a motion to approve this week's expenses, I know we all had a chance to review those.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Three to zero. So we'll just wait for the county councilor to give updates. Um, and then we will want to recess though, because we're gonna come back in to certify, correct?
So there's not really anything that you have to certify?
Okay.
Um, not until you get to the budget hearing, that's when you'll sign the papers and everything. This is mainly just to get the number to put the, the publication. Or to put the certificate in the paper publication, to have the hearing.
So for the adjustments we made today, you have that yet or not quite yet?
Um. Not quite done.
Okay, I, no, I was just curious, I was just curious.
Week or two, if we talk to the team, I mean, I don't know.
I just wondered, um, because I know today was kinda. I just wondered, um, because I know today was kind of our day of like, okay, we're walking out of here, yeah. We're walking out of here knowing like this is where it is and. Um, this is why. It's patent law. He took his computer, too.
Ready to get something done.
I don't know.
You know what that is? It's yours. It wasn't my desk. We couldn't figure out what it is. It's a little rubber hose.
Yeah, it's almost like somebody, I mean, like a medical device thing that. Somebody that. Yeah.
Okay. This is on my desk. You have to do what that is?
Little rubber hose is like.
Isn't it the strangest thing? Something to do with the blood draws or something?
Well.
It's worked, that's it. Yeah, no good bad.
I don't know where this K works, man. That's got a little level on it. Something I might actually use.
There you go.
That's very seldom does this little swag stuff ever get used. Man, that's some stretchy plastic.
You can't carry a box cutter or a knife anymore, but everything's wrapped in a package, so you can't get into without a knife.
Well, I can see this. It's got a level.
You could go do some work.
Get my square head level. I'm not very level, but.
Do I? We just said that on tape, no, they're recorded for history. Find everybody.
Uh, yeah, he's coming down from the clerk's office, Brian. I've gotten him. Or what's getting him?
With the adjustments that you made, that puts us at fifty-six point nine four nine.
Whoa, that was so close last week. Nine four nine mils.
Which is eleven thousand four hundred dollars away from fifty-seven. Eleven thousand four hundred dollars away from fifty-seven bills.
Any comments? Been done?
Yeah, right.
That's, I was just waiting on his updates and then we would adjourn to budget workshop. Cause we don't need to do anything beyond.
You don't, no.
Cause we're sitting at fifty-six point nine four nine.
We don't need to vote on that, right?
You don't, just because you said you'd be under fifty-seven, so.
When do those hit?
Not for sure when Michelle's gonna send them.
What's the deadline? Oh, she's got time. She's probably trying to get through the election first.
We're all gonna be glad every election's over. My mailbox is getting tired.
Your what?
My mailbox.
We're just looking at you because we're ready for county counselor updates.
That prayer doesn't seem to be working for me, um. The. I I think I probably wanna have about a five-minute executive session on attorney-client. Before county counselor updates. Five minutes. Three commissioners. And you?
I'm sorry.
Yes, and I I like to have something printed, too, but I I try to print it.
Will you email me?
Yeah, I'll just email you.
I won't look at it, though.
You're you're allowed to look at it.
You said the three commissioners and you, right? That's it.
Yes. Cause we're gonna spend five of it trying to get this printed. Wait till you get it printed before we go into it.
It'd be good, cause I got a lot of lot to do to make this happen.
You know, he's out there with his timer on five, and then we're gonna be ten. Sorry, not funny.
It's goes here, right? He could have fixed the printer.
Yeah, I guess I didn't print them even today.
Says out of, mine says it may be out of toner.
Good that I just bought you guys some, so.
Nice, good timing.
This page should come out of his budget.
Do you wanna hit clerks and I can run upstairs and get it? Do you have access?
Oh, no, that's the only printer I have.
Oh, I was gonna say, I, well, he's gonna have clerks, too. Or your office. So when we're done, even though we don't have to vote, I would like to just make sure. I know a summary one more time.
Okay.
Like one final time, which probably will still be the same, because the only difference was the coldest, which isn't. Isn't factored in, right? And I T reducing.
Yeah.
So, um. I can write I T on there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I don't know if we need three of those or.
Oh, okay. I'll put, I'll print. Not a problem.
Well, there. What's that? Pretty pretty good.
Oh, I thought.
I'm gonna ask, I I wanted to explain why before. Oh, maybe Roger. Did we, you already made the motion?
Did not make the motion yet.
So we're still on.
You're still on.
I'm gonna hear Roger.
Does he want me to copy?
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Had to laugh this morning there when I handed you that note about. That letter, okay, you gave me this look like it is, I had no idea.
Yeah.
I had no idea that that was.
It just came in, I think, when she brought it down to me, it just came in, that that letter that I. But I I wouldn't have been sure. It wasn't on the agenda anywhere.
No, and I just like, I know I had talked with Pat about, you know, being uh gonna be over this week or cut off, I'm just. It was just weird.
Was Roger gonna join?
He's, I think he went to lunch, oh, so.
Oh, yeah, so.
This is attorney client. Yeah, and I I think five minutes would do it.
Five minutes, okay. I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessing to executive session. At twelve seventeen uh P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. As allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in five minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be. Uh, three commissioners and uh county counselor.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I'm okay now, I'm anyway.
Okay, we are back in open session with a resolution number.
Well, the. The uh. Every time I should put this up before.
You're fine.
I have fifteen forty-three whenever.
Yes.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I have a uh a proposed resolution. Um, by the board to authorize the use of eminent do domain to obtain. Um, point eight six acres of riding way. Or Bridge two ninety, which is a bridge over Deer Creek on three hundred fourteenth Road. Um, we are actually probably not quite to the point of impasse with. Negotiations with the uh with the landowner. Um, so it it could wait, um. But I I guess I would like at least some uh. Some direction from the board that we would head towards eminent domain if we're not able to get. Our differences resolved in the the next two weeks.
I'm, I would be ready to uh act on this, um. It's. Been a point of contention for a long time. There's been a lot of back and forth, uh. There's time constraints on. Since we already have the uh award uh for funding. From K dot. And a lot of that's. We have to have all of our other uh environmental studies and everything done. We can't get on the property to do those studies. Until we have the property, and so. For those reasons, and I mean, there's been extensive back and forth with with the family that um. I would be ready to act on this.
That's not, I agree.
Okay, so I have resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen forty-three. A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, ordering the condemnation. And appropriation of certain interests in real estate. In Atchison County, Kansas, for use in the replacement of Bridge two ninety over Deer Creek. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second.
Say.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Aye, passes two to one.
We want more than one topic.
Hey, any other updates, Patrick?
Definitely.
Okay, so, um. I would look for a motion then, um. To adjourn into a budget workshop for the remainder of. Have a motion to.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.